Hi, I'm Jeremy Frogsby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're the hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every day, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can view all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues that affect you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
I name everyone to the Fitchburg Common Council meeting for September 10, 2024. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting at 7:30. Please stand up for the place of allegiance. Thank you. Next roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Ratafara.
Here.
Alder Dantzler Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jetser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado is...
No, he's here.
He's here.
Here.
Alder Vafadari.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a quorum here.
Thank you. So next, we move to item four, public appearances for non-agenda items and new appointments. We don't have anything, anyone in the room. So then, we move to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
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 Then both the motion carries. Thank you. Next, we move to the administrative report.
Well, good evening. Chad is obviously not here. I'm filling in for Chad tonight. I do have a few announcements. The first one is we do have a public workshop for the teen center that will be held on September 12th from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. It's a virtual meeting. The purpose of the workshop is to get feedback on the design and the programming of the project. I sent out a reminder email today regarding the strategic plan survey. That survey does close tomorrow, so if you haven't had a chance to take the survey, I would just kindly ask if you have some time tonight or tomorrow, please take that. The referendum, we are ramping up as part of the referendum process. The first mailing that we're doing to the entire community, or the residential community, that'll be printed this week. It'll be sent to USPS next week, and it should arrive at mailboxes the week of the 22nd. So that'll be coming out here pretty quickly. We are sending that to 16,676 residential addresses. So those are all the residential addresses that we have in the city. Also with the referendum, we'll be having an informational session. The first one is next Wednesday, September 18th. That's at 5:30 PM, and that'll be on Zoom. And the second one, which will be the first in-person session, they'll be held on September 23rd at 6:00 PM at Redeemer City Church. And I would encourage the council, if you have time, so you can attend any of those meetings if you'd like. Absentee ballots, those will be going out in the mail next week, so there'll be another mailing that'll be going out from the city. And then finally, September is National Senior Center Month, and as part of that, the senior center is having the Red Hot Horn Dogs performing Thursday, September 19th from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the senior center. I think I've seen them a couple times. They're really good. If you haven't seen them, they're highly entertaining, and they bring a lot of energy. So if you have time, I would encourage you to check that out. And those are all the updates I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I have a question. For the listening session for the, for next week, for the September 18th, the virtual one, and the other one is the 23rd. How we are informing the residents about this?
Yep, so we have a press release that's gone out. We'll also be having some social media posts that'll be going out next week as well, too. And then, when the mailing hits the mailbox as well, it'll be most likely after the 18th. They'll have all the informational dates on that mailer when it hits the mailboxes.
But if we send, if we start posting this Facebook post next week, the 18th is next week.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be enough time for people to...
There's no registration on it, so there's not like anyone has to register for it. We do have a meeting with the consultant tomorrow, and we'll talk about maybe pushing that out as soon as we can.
Yeah, because it's too close, you know.
We'll do something. We can do that.
Yeah.
So we could get an infographic to that, to that measure, like, or something, not even an infographic, just a list of all the dates. I think you would put that together at one point, but something that Alders could share on neighborhood Facebook pages?
Yep, I'll get something off that. They are preparing infographics as well for...
Oh, I'm sure they are.
Thanks and posters actually at the senior center, City Hall, and the community center as well, so... But I'll work on, see what they can do to kind of get that, actually, like, as something you can just share on your socia ls.
Awesome, thank you.
And I think also, we need to do it in the Fitchburg Star.
Yep.
We need to, because people read that newspaper. They have the online version and the printed version, and I think we can do that. Okay, we have a question for Donna.
Just a comment. I was just wondering if we're not having a registration for individuals, are we somehow capturing the amount of individuals who attend these meetings in some sort of way with attendance or something at the meeting?
Yes, they'll be, they'll kind of put their name in. It's gonna be a Zoom meeting. That's how it's gonna be run. And then, if they have questions, there'll be a hand raise function as well as part of that. So we'll know kind of the names that are on that list, but they won't have to formally register for it. No different than if they showed, no different if they actually showed up at in-person. They wouldn't actually have to sign in, they could just show up.
So another question. How those, the format from those virtual meeting will be? What is, do you, you have like an intro? Who is gonna be doing the introduction? You know, I mean, I want to...
I haven't seen the draft presentation yet. It's supposed to be, yes.
Mueller is working on that. Okay, okay, okay.
My understanding is there'll be an introduction. It could be potentially, it's gonna be done by Chad, Chad will be leading the presentations. We'll probably try to recognize any elected officials that are in the room as well.
Okay.
We'll do our presentation, or Chad will do his presentation, and then there'll be question and answer at the end. And if Alders are present, that, Alders may assist with that kind of Q and A.
And for the in-person, you know, because it's gonna be important that the council member that represents the district show up to those meeting. I wouldn't be able to say something as, you know, as a mayor or as an elected official, you know?
We can do something to the intro there. If people want to, if you don't, we can, we can just introduce you, and you can wave. Otherwise, we can find some opportunities to say a real brief introduction.
So we are not gonna be presenting, or we are not gonna be...
No, it's gonna, it's gonna be staff. Yeah, staff will be giving the presentation, but if you're there, you can do a quick introduction that, hi, Mayor Julia.
Okay. I don't know if there's a plan to do a newsflash about these as well, but I think those, the texts that come through, I think people see those as well.
We can do that.
Any other question, comments? Nope? Okay. Thank you. So next, we move to the mayor's report. We are still working on the budget. You know, it's been challenging to make the budget balance. So this week, we have a couple of meeting to go through, through the budget. So the budget is gonna be very lean, you know? So we are being very cautious about this, because especially for a referendum. So I have been working on that with staff. The other thing, I participated in the pre-bond cutting of the, or the reveal of the Wildflowers of Wisconsin, the mural in the McKiffin Park. This is a beautiful mural. It's gonna be in that place until next year, August. So if you haven't seen it, I would recommend to go and take a look. It's beautiful. The other thing I am doing on Fridays, I am walking the neighborhood with, I usually go with Chief Morales. So we started with Southdale Neighborhood, and it was, it's great to go and talk to the neighbors, asking how they are feeling about the annexation, how they feel now. So far, we are getting good feedback, and also, we are presenting ourselves to the leasing offices, you know? So because some of them, they don't know about us. What we're trying to do now is to, you know, to bring more material and brochure from the city, so people, you know, so they can get more information, or like, ask the tenant to, you know, to register and notify me, so they can have, receive information from the city. What else? We had a meeting with Dane County Highway to discuss BRT, because, you know, BRT, Fish Hatcher is a county road, and we need to work with them, too. We also, I also attended a meeting in the trailer park. There had been some issue with that park. We had a meeting, what was it, like, two weeks ago? And thank you to Alder Allen, Vafadari, they attended the meeting. So we have serious concern with that park, and we are trying to, to see what we can do and resolve those issues, especially with the sewer and the quality of the water. What else? There is another project that I am working, and I don't think that I share with you. You know, we are the wall of all the former mayors, that we move it to the, to the other wall, you know? So that wall, what we're gonna do is a history wall. So I am working with the Fitchburg Historical Society, and they are, you know, providing the, some of the content. And I already met with a designer, so to have an idea what we want to do in that wall. So that one is another project. If you are interested in working that project, let me know, because, you know, I need help, okay? So I will need help with the project, and if you are interested to come out, what is gonna be the history that we want to, you know, to add in that, in that wall? You know, what is the relevance, you know? Relevant information that we can add in the history wall? So if you want to help me with this project, you know, thank you. I am looking for volunteers. What else? That's it from now. Any questions?
Madam Mayor, did you want, did you want to mention the information from the Dane Demes meeting that'll be coming to Fitchburg around the numbers they're supposed to send to us about the calculations for their referendum that impact Fitchburg residents?
For which one?
From the, remember at the Dane Demes meeting, when the mayor was talking, and you asked about, like, numbers for, like, how it would impact, like, Fitchburg taxpayers, and they said they were gonna send...
Oh, yeah, so you know, yeah, so as you know that the Madison School District is going to a referenda, the called referenda, in November, and almost 40% of our household are in the Madison School District, and we are gonna have that question in the ballot. You know, I am living in the Madison School District, so practically, they are gonna ask for $100 million for operational for four years, and $507 million for capital for 23 years. So I need you go to the Madison School District website, and there is, they have a section for the referenda, and you can add the value of your home, and it's gonna tell you how much you are gonna pay in the next four years, how much your taxes are gonna increase in the next four years. So, and the other thing that I asked the people, they were presenting, is that they should have a listening session in Fitchburg, because they have no plan, a listening session in Fitchburg yet. That one concerned me, because I don't know if people in Fitchburg knows about this referenda. We haven't received any information so far. So that one is, you know, some, in the ballot in November, some of us, we will have three questions, no, four questions. Two from the Madison School District, one from Fitchburg, and one, there is another constitution, constitutional question. So when I have more information from the Madison School District, if they are planning to do, you know, a listening session in Fitchburg, I'm gonna try to send that information out, because I wanna tell you that the average home in Fitchburg, in year four, the taxes will increase $1,400. The average home is $457,000. So, yes, so, and there is information. I have some information here, and I brought several of these brochure, and they are in the front desk. If you want to know more, here, we have some information. So if you want to see it, you can pass it around. Thank you. Yeah.
I'm glad you're doing that. I think that's a good location. Where are you gonna move the mayor's pictures to?
They are already moved.
Oh, they are already moved.
Have you seen it? Yeah, they, yeah, they moved it to the other, where is the, the wall that goes to the senior center?
Oh, yeah, I've seen, okay. Oh, I, okay, I'm behind here, okay.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you, okay. Oh, and the other thing that I want to mention, that today, this month is Hunger Action Month, so, and the city of Fitchburg, today, we took a picture all, wearing orange. As you know, you know, there is food insecurity in southwestern Wisconsin, and the latest data from Feeding America indicates that one in 10 people in our region are considered food insecure. So meaning that they don't have enough food to eat, and are unsure when they will have the next meal. So this is an opportunity for this month, that you have the opportunity of some residual income that you want to donate, donate to the food pantry, because 11% of the population in Dane County face food insecurity. So this is, and one in six children in Dane County are food insecure. So I will appreciate that, you know, do something this, during the month of September to, you know, to alleviate this, this issue that you've got, so. That's it. So next, we move to commission and reports, and we are gonna start with Plan Commission.
We meet next week, otherwise, no report.
Okay, thank you. Board of Public Works.
Resolution R 15224 approving agreement with Pelletary for 2025 through 2029 solid waste and recycling contracts.
Second.
So did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
RCC?
Approved with an amendment.
Finance approved.
Finance approve what? The original of...
The original.
Original, okay. Okay, what is this?
I'll let, I'll let Ben.
Oh, Ben is here, okay.
Sure, well, thank you, everyone. Yeah, so this is basically the next five-year contract with Pelletary for solid waste hauling services. The current contract ends at December 31st of this year. Earlier this year, we released an RFP advertised by legal notice in the State Journal. We solicited proposals from several vendors. In addition to Pelletary, however, we only did receive one proposal from Pelletary. We'll just jump into the recommendation here for proposed collection services over the course of this contract. Starting out with solid waste, we've got a recommendation of no change, so continue with the current program. That's weekly trash pickup, standard 35-gallon container, with the option to upgrade to a larger size. We do have a change recommended for recycling. Currently, the city of Fitchburg uses an unlimited recycling program, and what that means is residents can place additional bags of recyclables next to their cart at no cost. For trash, as a comparison, there would be a cost to have additional bags. But we did find, through some data provided by Pelletary, that there's just one, at most 2% of properties using the city's collection service that do put out additional bags. And anecdotally, it appears that many of these homes are putting out cardboard, which of course can be recycled at no cost to residents at the recycling drop-off site. The unlimited recycling program does have a fairly significant cost. It's $40,000 more than the standard recycling program. What that means, if you are wanting to maintain a neutral impact to the fund balance, that unlimited program would cost $6 more annually per unit, or per property. In addition, residents do have the option to upgrade to a larger cart, so a 95-gallon rather than 65-gallon if they are routinely, you know, max, going over the capacity of their cart. And if that's still not enough, residents could still put out additional bags, but there would be a fee, and that would be worked out between Pelletary and the resident. Yard waste, we do have a different recommendation for yard waste as well. So the recommendation here is to add a yard waste in the fall. Right now, there's two in the spring, two in the fall. Just heard a lot from residents that a third yard waste would be appreciated, specifically in the fall. The other potential benefit is we could get, the city could get some more credit towards meeting their total maximum daily load, waste load allocation, so it's just a permit requirement for basically, you know, how, the quality of the stormwater being sent to creeks and stuff. If you get, if you get up to three yard waste pickups in the fall, you can get a credit for phosphorus reduction from the DNR. Leaves have a lot of phosphorus. The more you pick them up, they'll credit you for it. It is a pretty small area of the city that would be eligible for this credit. It's really only kind of the former Town of Madison area that was absorbed a couple years ago. I don't really have a quantified cost implication, what the city stands to gain by taking advantage of that credit. It's probably fairly small, but nonetheless, it is there. The cost to add an additional yard waste collection would be about $24,000 annually based on Pelletary's price quotation. Brush, no changes here, so current program provides 14 brush pickups. We'd be still looking at doing 14. Bulk item pickup via appointment, again, no change here. Residents can reach out to Pelletary to get their mattresses, couches, larger items picked up. So looking at the cost over the term of this contract, there's a pretty consistent 3.5% increase annually from 2025 through 2029. Looking at the cost compared to the current cost, in 2024, these services cost $207.24 per unit or property for next year. If the recommended, recommendation, if the recommended services are selected, you'd be looking at $205.64, so you'd have a reduction of $1.60 per household going into next year, and then that's when you would start to see the 3.5% increase off of that rate. And with that, I guess I'll just open it up if there are any questions.
So Todd Bolingback, from, he's from Pelletary, he's a municipal account executive. Do you want to say something, Todd?
I'm more than happy to come up, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your time earlier as well. No, it's been a pleasure servicing your community and touching on what Ben said. Basically, everything that you have going on right now, moving forward to next year, the only change would be moving away from the extra bags on the side. It's a very dangerous profession. We are eliminating that service in almost all of our communities. And we found that on an average week, we're seeing about 90-ish homes that are using that service. So it seems that, you know, almost 7,000 homes shouldn't pay for, the numbers don't add up. It makes sense to save that money for the city, in my opinion. And adding the extra brush pickup, so you can actually have the same service, add the brush pickup, and actually reduce your cost for next year compared to this year's cost. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding our services, our recycling, anything at all. Yes, sir.
Okay. We have Dave and then Joe Maldonado. Okay, Dave.
And then who?
So Todd, I'm, you know, I'm, most residents are happy with the service. But last fall, last fall was a cluster with the leaves that they missed some, then they, bags were tied shut to keep from blowing around. They put a tag that blew away, and, and we can't have that again this fall, okay? I just, I gotta, people were mad. I hauled a dozen, dozen people's leaves to the waste site themselves, because it was after the pickup, and they didn't get picked up. And so, please, you know, if they are gonna leave a tag, you know, we'll try to educate our residents not to tie the bags, but, you know, we can't, we can't have bags still out there in December, so that's...
Understood. And it's, I know it's been addressed, we did field several calls about that, so we're always working to better the service, but we do need those, those bags untied.
Yeah, understood.
Joe?
Pardon my ignorance, what typically happens to the yard waste?
I believe we take that to Purple Cow Organics, or do we take that to a different...
Yeah, that's correct. It goes to Purple Cow Organics, which they use for their composting operation.
Okay, Nikon?
And then, maybe, this might be a RCC question, if any of the Alders know. Have we ever, as a city, discussed having, like, municipal compost for, like, folks to be able to implement? I know that's been implemented in other larger cities.
So the city of Fitchburg currently does have a municipal composting operation, so anything that gets dropped off by residents at the yard waste drop-off site, you know, people bring in grass clippings, leaves. That stuff does get composted at the facility maintenance building. And then, once the compost is composted, it's a, it's a final product, that goes back out to that little section of the drop-off site where residents can take mulch. They can also take compost.
Oh, I meant more for people that, kind of like, actually collecting compost and...
Collection, sure.
From their homes, similar to like San Francisco did it.
Yes, yes, sorry about that. Yeah, yeah, San Francisco does have a great program where everyone has an additional cart. We did get a price for that in this RFP. You know, I think the biggest hurdle right now is finding, you know, appropriate end use for the sheer volume of material. So there's a lot of exciting things going on at the Dane County Landfill with their new sustainability campus. So as far as I know, they're, they're actually ramping up some of their composting services and outreach and whatnot, just trying to get, get more, you know, food waste and whatnot diverted from the landfill. But I believe they're still intending to build a digester, and if that is the case, you know, Fitchburg would be, you know, really an ideal, an ideal community to provide some of that feedstock. So, you know, if you get something like that constructed, I think that would make a composting program a lot more viable. Right now, I mean, there's just so much, I'm sure it could be done, it would, it would just probably be more than, you know, people would, people would maybe want to pay. But, but the good news is there is a lot of private companies that do offer that service, so if people are interested, there's Greenbox. There's, I think, two more kind of bigger ones in the area. So, and frankly, I don't know that the city can offer that service at a better price than they can at this point.
And I could add to that, too. As a hauling provider, we are looking forward to providing that service. We obviously aren't composters ourselves, but as soon as the facilities are in place, we're only as good as where we have the ability to take something that be properly processed. And taken off of what Ben said, when, you know, Dane County Landfill does get their new campus built up, and they do move in that direction, that is services, additional pickups, whether that be an extra bin for compost, that's absolutely something that we're anticipating and looking forward to providing in the future. But again, right now, I think we're probably, I don't want to speak for the Dane County Landfill, but we're probably a good year and a half out from having a really, really serious conversation about that.
Nikon?
Sorry for all the follow-up.
One second, Joe.
I'm wondering...
Are you done with your question?
No, I just wanted to ask a follow-up to that question.
Okay.
I'm wondering from the policymaker's perspective, like what, if that type of thing were to be implemented, would that be a public works, um, you know, discussion? Would that be Resource Conservation Committee? And also could, you know, Pelletary, or, or, I don't know who in general could keep us appraised of this as a council in, in case we want to decide to move towards something like this.
Was that, was that a question for me?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I would envision, you know, that being a conversation that takes place with, with, like you said, primarily probably Board of Public Works and the Resource Conservation Commission. And, and we do have relationships with the folks over at the Dane County landfill. You know, we wrote, we wrote a letter of support for them for a grant that talked about how Pittsburgh would, would be a provider of feedstock for their, their operations. So, yeah, we definitely want to, you know, keep talking with them and, and seeing what they're doing. And, uh, you know, I think it is on the, on the horizon.
Thank you. Nicole?
Well, I have three questions, but I'll try and keep them very fast. I'm sorry. So the, the first one, kind of building off Alder Herbst's comment, we also experienced a lot of, a lot of comments from neighbors and myself included about leaf collection. And I'm super happy to hear that we're adding a third one. I think that will make things so much better. I wanted the clarification, the credit might only be available for the town of Madison, but the whole town of Pittsburgh gets the third one, right? The third pickup of the fall?
Correct. It would be all city.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to make sure. And then is there, would that also help mitigate? I know some neighbors, including myself, also struggled with, there would, it would rain, which would make the leaf bags very heavy because in my household, we try and use reusable leaf bags because I have neighbors that use 80 plastic bags, which just makes me shake with annoyance for the environmental impact. And it made it to the point where our leaves were not picked up because we were told they were too heavy, but it had rained and then there was a delay in the leaf pickup, which felt quite unfair. So I guess my question is, how are, kind of building off of that, are we looking, do we expect that to not be an issue? And is there a plan to get rid of the bag requirements? Because it still irks me when I see my neighbors bagging like 80 bags each fall.
I'm not sure if that's a me or Ben question.
It's in either of you.
But I'll, I can chime in, whether you want to say you have to use like a compostable bag, I know those are available, or you can just throw the whole bag right in without having to, or whether it's be, you know, like a polywoven, almost like a bulk sack or the reusable. That would be on the city. We're not gonna, we would love to not have to deal with the, the plastic bags.
Right.
But that would, that would have to be a city decision. That wouldn't, Pelletary wouldn't be like, we're not accepting them. We just don't want them tied because my guys can't be walking out and with a box cutter opening up all these bags. It would double the time it takes us to do that, that project.
And there isn't a plan to moving towards like putting, sweeping the leaves out of the street?
Um, no, that would require all new trucks, all new equipment, totally different.
Gotcha.
And because we send so many crews because of the size of your city, it just, logistically it wouldn't make sense. The, the trucks that we use and the team in place, we can use for multiple different jobs, so.
So you actually nicely segued into my next two questions. Can you talk about your green vehicle strategy and when there is plan to upgrade to more renewable, more eco-friendly run?
Well, I can tell you this. We are, we do have a handful of compressed natural, natural gas vehicles on our fleet. We are purchasing more. We ran into a big hiccup around COVID time where prices, allocation, truck that was $400,000 and we could get in six months are now $650,000 and takes a year and a half to get, just from, obviously, everything being shut down. But we have purchased more compressed natural gas vehicles, so we are expanding that part of our fleet. In this climate right now and what's available, I just, there's no way to justify going to any sort of electric vehicle. The cost is almost twice as much. It runs for about two-thirds as long, so it would double the cost of what it would, it just, it doesn't logistically make sense. And in Wisconsin climate, especially in the winter, that can cause some serious issues. But, so yes, absolutely, we're expanding our natural gas fleet, but if you're looking at electric, it's not going to be anytime soon. A lot of things would have to change from a design standpoint.
Sure. So my last question, you kind of touched on as well, my assumption, and I would love you to confirm that this is a true assumption, I've heard that we are the largest municipality that uses Pelletary. Is that a true statement or no?
It is not.
Okay.
Close, though. You're, I believe, the second largest.
Okay.
City of Sun Prairie is the biggest.
Ah. We always just flirting with Sun Prairie about how big we're going to get. So I guess that just leads to the question, I would love to understand what the city has done to do, you know, this goes out to 2029, which I think is incredibly appropriate and makes total sense. I would love to understand what the city is doing to create a meaningful plan to see when this starts to hit a point where it makes sense for our city to invest in these vehicles. I have no idea what that investment looks like. I have no idea what that cost is. It's probably like the dumbest question in the world. But that being said, as we think about how much our city is planning to grow and how much some of these services could be brought in-house, I would love to just understand. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and as far as the collection of trash and recyclables, I, I don't know that Pittsburgh will be getting in, into that just due to the, I mean, that's a huge capital cost. But I think there, I think you're absolutely right that some services, you know, brush pickup or yard waste pickup, staff did take a look at, you know, there, there are quite a few communities around here that use vacuum trucks or vacuum trailers to pick up leaves. We looked into that, you know, what can you get a used model for? How much staff time does it take? How many would you have to get to get around the city in an appropriate amount of time? Talked to some different directors, public works directors to get their thoughts, learned a little bit more about the process and operation. And ultimately, we just found that, you know, we, it wasn't really, it didn't make a lot of fiscal sense. Cost-wise, I don't believe that we can compete with, with Pelletary per their price quotations to provide that service. Because it's a little tricky, these vac trucks, you know, they can pick up the leaves, but small twigs and other things that would be included in yard waste pickup, it's going to tear up the hose, it's gonna, it's gonna damage the machine. And that was one of the things that we heard a lot. You almost have to get two trucks because you know one of them is going to be, you know, being maintained pretty frequently.
Gotcha.
And I can chime as well, and we touched bases at our previous meeting too. Should the day come, if the city is like, you know what, we are going to invest in three of these trucks, we want to do that. Although we are contracted, that is written in here too, we just need about a year's notice because we do budget these weeks for these pickups. But we're, we're pretty fluid. We, we, obviously, you guys have been a terrific partner of ours. So, you know, if it's two years down the line, you're like, you know, we're going to give this a go, we would just need a year's notice so we can reallocate those weeks to other communities, you know, put our trucks and our employees at different spots, but we're.
I think that was kind of the recommendation that came out of that effort was, you know, this is something to look at every, every few years and see if anything changes.
I think that's a great plan.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. I have a question for Bill. You mentioned that RCC amended this. Can you explain what was the amendment?
Yeah. So with the switch to, you know, getting rid of the unlimited recycling, we thought maybe the city could foot the bill for like the first 50 cart upgrades from 65 to 95 gallons for people who regularly use the unlimited recycling. It'd be $25 per upgrade.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that, that that language be added, that, that the city will pay for the first 50 cart upgrades.
Second.
Okay. So can you?
Can we even do that?
Did he put an amendment?
Well, I, I just like, don't you need a budget amendment to do that? I just don't know if we could, I don't know what the mechanism, I know Misty's not here, but.
I guess I'll just jump in and say we haven't set the rates and it's $1,200. It, it, it wouldn't impact the rate.
What? Can you repeat?
It'd be like $1,200, 25 times 50.
Okay. Okay, we have Dave.
Yeah, but I appreciate the sentiment. I've never used it. I don't want to pay for it and no one on my street has ever used it. So I, I, you know, it's only $25 one-time upgrade for those people to do it. If they're using a lot, I think it, it pays for, it pays for it for themselves. So I, I, I would oppose that.
So the, the other question is, are you talking about the recycle bin?
The recycling bin, yes.
They're bigger, they are bigger recycle bin than the one that we have already, they're big.
Well, there's, there's two options, right? The standard is 64, 65 gallons, whatever it is, but you've got the option to upgrade to a 95 gallon size.
Okay.
So if you're a regular user of the unlimited recycling with the 64, 65 gallon cart, you could pay the 25 bucks to get a 95 gallon cart if you can find a place to store it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand why we should do that because we have a recycle place here and we, if we have cardboard, you know, it's to put it in the blue recycling bin, we can take it to the recycle site. You know what I mean? So, because this is what I do. So I don't think that we should pay. I think it's a personal option, you know, to do that. So I don't know. I don't see that. Who is Nicole and then Jay?
I would agree. I think this might be a record. I'm agreeing with Alder Herbst twice in the meeting before an hour is done. Dave, it's a record. I, I completely agree. I love the sentiment, actually, but as somebody who personally just upgraded and paid more money for one of those big bad boys, it's huge. If anybody does fill up their recycling, you should buy one of them. They're amazing. I don't, I don't think the city should foot the bill for a personal decision to do that.
Uh, Jay?
So I just want to understand this because I, my waste doesn't get taken care of in this way. I live in an apartment building, so I have unlimited recycling as it is. What does unlimited recycling mean? I mean, someone's got the recycling bin, right? Are they just allowed to put as much stuff next to the bin as they can?
Yeah, I could, if you don't mind, I can, I'd be happy to answer that.
Okay, yes.
The program as it stands now, if your recycling bin is filled up, as long as it's in a clear bag, you can add additional bags of recycling and my guys will get out of the truck, they'll dump your can, they'll reload the kit, the, the cart up and then dump it a second time. We are moving away from that in all of our communities. We don't want our drivers out. It's unsafe, it's.
I totally understand it. I didn't realize we were doing that.
And about 98% of the community is not right now.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking about the size of a 65 gallon cart. Do we pick those up every week?
Your recycling is every other week.
Yeah, I know. I, I know, but you can, you know, you don't put cardboard in that bin and take it to the recycle site. Okay.
Yeah, I just, I'm also opposed. I mostly just don't think, I don't necessarily want staff having to track this. I think that's, that's a lot.
Yeah.
And I also appreciate the sentiment, but I just don't think functionally, practically, it's not very practical to do.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the table, so I will ask, is everyone is agree with 700, what is, what is the amendment?
For the city to, so for the people who regularly use the, the unlimited recycling to ease the, the blow of that service going away, the city would pay for up to 50 upgrades from 65 to 95 gallon carts.
Okay, this is the amendment. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Nay.
The amendment failed. So now we are on the original one. So any more question about this?
I have one, one more question just about the wording. There's the two staff recommendations and one includes like the additional brush collection and then it says cost-saving options. We can reduce brush collection and keep the number of yard waste. Sorry, I said the wrong thing. We can keep the number of yard waste. Which one are we voting on? With the additional fall pickup and with the stability of 14? Okay, cool.
That is correct, yeah. So the, the staff recommendation, just to summarize, no change to trash, going from unlimited to standard recycling, adding one yard waste pickup in the fall, and then no changes to brush, keeping that at 14.
Okay, all those.
Jay has a question.
Oh, Jay.
Yeah, I just have a couple more questions about this. So are we, I, maybe I misunderstood something Nicole said. Are we requiring that people bag yard waste when they leave it out for collection? That's how it works.
Bag or, or some sort of receptacle, it could be a cart.
It had to be.
Why?
It's just the way that it gets picked up.
It had been for 20 years that I live in the city, we use this system.
Like the sucker vacuum trucks to suck it up? So you have to put them all in bags, sorry.
That seems just astoundingly wasteful.
Well, okay, but this is the way we are doing for many, many years, so.
Well, it may be the way we've done it for many, many years, but just because we've done it one way for many, many years, doesn't mean we have to keep doing it. And I'm not proposing changing that right now, but I think that's something we should be thinking about as we move forward. I, the other question I had is on this, on the brush collection. Now, I, I remember when we were dealing with $75 a year for the waste collection program back in the, in the 90s. So everything used to cost a lot less. So, you know, the fact that it's over $200 now is really fascinating, but, uh, we, back then, we used to do brush collection eight times a year. Is there some reason why we have such a high demand for brush collection?
Yeah, there is.
I guess I could try to answer that. Yeah, I don't know when it started as 14. Note, note that I did, I mean, if, if there's, you know, interest in more cost-saving options, I think that's the next thing you look at is cutting it down from 14 to 12. But when you look at the data, when people are, you know, setting out their brush and when it's being collected, it's, it's really pretty sporadic. And there are some benefits to having 14, you know, storm damage, you know, if, if something happens, people don't have to wait, you know, four weeks or we don't have to call in an emergency brush pickup. I mean, even just this, earlier this year, it was really great. You know, we didn't have to call in, you know, Barnes or some contractor to do an emergency brush pickup because, you know, someone was going to be here the next week. So I, I would say that's kind of the biggest reason in my, in my mind, but certainly, you know, if.
We have more trees.
And, and right, honestly, that, that is, I mean, Pittsburgh's got a ton of trees.
Yeah, we have a lot of trees, but just because we have more trees.
More brush.
Doesn't, it, it's more brush, but it doesn't mean it requires a greater frequency to pick it up.
I disagree. If you're a homeowner and you have to clear off your brush from your property, this is a, this is 100% required.
I was a homeowner and I did this every year and I put my brush out and it got picked up.
I think we are going through the branch.
I called a question.
Sorry for talking while you're interrupting. So.
I, you know, I am the chair and I can say, you know, that we are going to move forward and we are going to end the conversation with this.
That's fine, but a lot of people have said a lot of things in this discussion and I just.
Okay, ask your question.
Want to make one more point here. I mean, I, I, there's several months out of the year when there's no brush being collected at all, right? I mean, I presume that from December through April probably, maybe even November, maybe for six months out of the year, there's no brush being collected at all. So this looks like we're picking up brush twice a month for six months out of the year, which seems like a lot to me.
I want to tell you, I want to tell you something with, you know, I, I use, you know, I have like more than 23 in my, in my backyard. I want to say between October and November, I don't know how many bags, you know, I had to bag, you know, for leaves. And I want to tell you, one time I forgot to put the bags when there was a week, pickup week, and then I had to hire someone else to come and dispose that and it cost me like $200, you know? So the $200 I pay annually for this is nothing compared, you have a landscaping company that are going to come and remove your, your, your yard's waste.
I'm talking about brush, not yard waste.
It is the same.
I called a question.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Gabriela. Okay. All those in favor, resolution 152 and 24, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you, guys. The motion carries. Okay, so next move to park commission.
Move approval of resolution R-13524 approving the grant application and requirements for the 2024 urban forestry grant.
Second.
Parks approved.
Did finance committee approve?
Finance approved. Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So we are applying for a grant to have a, have a consultant update or create our urban forestry plan. And that's what this grant is. We're requesting this grant for, I believe, half the grant and the city would pay the other, the other half is what I recall.
And they need a resolution by, from council. Okay.
We learned at finance that the match, it actually is Anna Healy's salary. So we don't have to have additional funds beyond which we pay her.
Yeah, the match will be their, their work in kind. Thank you, Gabrielle.
Okay, any questions, comment?
I have a question.
Yes.
First of all, the resolution, I don't see in here anywhere where it's saying how much the grant actually is. I guess we know.
50,000 total.
And we do a lot of grant applications and most of them don't come before the council as a resolution. So what makes this one?
Because some of the grants, they require a resolution from council. It had to be part of the packet.
Okay.
And this one is one of that because I asked this question. Yes. Yeah, I asked a question because why do we? Okay, any other comment question? All those in favor of resolution R-135-24, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, next one.
A move approval of resolution R-14724 approving Emerald Ash Borer management plan update 2024. Parks approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So this discusses how many, how many ash trees we are going to be treating, you know, chemically treating to, to maintain. Also discusses, you know, the removal of other ones. These are, these are ash trees on city property. It's not on any private property. And we've talked about this at parks, public works. I think Anna gave an update, maybe at council here at one time.
And tree committee as well.
Maybe tree.
Tree advisory, yeah.
So my question is, because I know that, you know, we have a plant from the, the tree that are infected, they are in the public, you know, they are city-owned. But what happened with the one that are in private, you know, residence? You know, how do we teach, you know, I mean, the homeowner, how to treat this tree? Or, you know, because we don't have any power, isn't it?
We have no power, yeah. Thank you for asking the question, Madam Mayor. We have no, no power to enforce anything. But you will notice landscape companies do make a pretty good effort going around seeing homes that have ash, leaving flyers, describing, you know, if they see the tree and it's still healthy, we can treat this for you to maintain it. But we, you know, we can't force anyone. I had one and before I realized that, you know, I was getting around to treating it, it was, it was too, it was too far gone already. So, but the, the individual landscaping companies do make a pretty earnest effort pointing these trees out to neighbors and leaving flyers and things.
Okay, okay. Any other comment, question?
So this has been through a lot of permutations since about 2005 or 2006. Are we going to be able to save these trees or what's the story here?
No, I believe we can. You know, people that have, I have neighbors that have been treating their trees for, for quite some, quite some time. And, you know, you can't, I think we try to get to a point where we might treat them every other year or every third year, depending on, depends on the, the ash borer density or infestation in the area. Scott, did you want to say something here?
Yeah, maybe just a couple, a couple thoughts. The reason for the management plan is actually that, that's, at the end of the day, all the ash trees will be, will be removed due to the Emerald Ash Borer. So this was a plan that was developed to try to manage the, the removal of the trees. It, it does include four pieces where Anna and her team will go out and assess the ash trees. They'll treat a number of ash trees, will remove a number of ash trees, and then we're working to replace the ash trees. But at the end of the day, this is really a, a cost-effective way to manage the removal of all of our ash trees within the community.
Yes.
I would just add one thing, you know, it was a number of years ago, we saw this coming. You know, we bought a bucket, a bucket truck specifically, you know, because we knew we were going to have a large number of these to deal with in the city rather than, we evaluated it versus having a contractor come and do it and we, we'd have other use for the buckets. So it was a number of years ago, we purchased that equipment with this in mind.
Yeah, I have a question. When we replaced this, this type of tree, we're replacing with the same type of tree? With an ash or we, or no? No?
No, it'll be a different, a different, a different species of tree it'll be replaced with. And really what, what Anna works on is she tries to create diversity in the, the urban forest. If you remember, the, you know, the American elm went through, you know, its demise. The ash went through its demise. So we really want to try and diversify the, the types of trees out in the community just in case something else might come through and, and, you know, wipe out one of the specific species of trees.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Yeah, just, just to add to that, to clarify, like, trees don't survive Emerald Ash Borer. So just to be clear, this is a prolonging the tree's life, which is super important for our tree canopy and for everything else. But just like, if you, if you want to be a little sad, read about Emerald Ash Borer. But if you want to be super encouraged, listen to Anna Healy's plan on fixing and replacing and diversifying through Scott and his team. So I just want to be clear that like, especially for residents, if your tree gets infected with Emerald Ash Borer, it's not like all of a sudden going to get better. These chemicals and these treatments and to Dave's point, our, our work to try and help inform private citizens, it doesn't kind of recover from that. It just hopefully prolongs the life a little bit.
So that we can manage its removal at the end of the day.
Any other question, comment? Oh, Jay.
So according to this resolution, we've got, it looks like 299 ash trees on public streets and 11 in parks out of 14,000 or so trees that we have total. What, what, I mean, I'm not asking for a detailed list. I'm sure you have one somewhere, but what other species might these be replaced with?
Might be what?
Might, might we be replacing these ash trees with?
Well, there's several, you know, we've got Kentucky coffee trees, we got oak trees, we got, while there is disease-resistant elms, there's a whole handful of, of species of tree that we can plant that don't show any, any signs of being receptive to a disease or a bug or, or something like that.
Well, now, but 20 years ago, no one saw this thing coming. Well, 25 years ago.
Well, and I think that, exactly. And that, that goes to the diversification of the, of the urban forest. We want to be diverse. So, you know, if it wipes out, you know, one species, it doesn't take out a, you know, a big portion of our, of our inventory.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-147-24, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So next we move to library board. Oh, Jim?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Commission of aging well?
Yes, one second, sorry, hold on, let me just pull it up. We, I just wanted to let everyone know that this is to celebrate National Senior Center and to celebrate National Senior Center Month. The senior center is having a party on Thursday, September 19th, from 5 to 8. Food and drinks will be available to purchase and entertainment by the Red Hot Horned Dogs. And a flyer will be into the hall if it isn't already. And on Thursday, the, the meeting that we had, Ben Lyman from the Greater Madison Metropolitan Planning Organization will be sharing information about the 500, the 5310 transportation grants that the senior center is looking to participate in to adhere some type of transportation for the seniors, for the senior center.
Thank you, Donald. Resource Conservation Commission?
Yes, we met last night. Pale Blue Dot gave us a presentation on the sustainability plan. It was pretty similar to what we saw at the committee of the whole. Phil provided some updates on various grants, energy innovation, innovation grants, bike network gaps getting filled in, direct pay for EV purchases, that sort of thing. Reminder that this Saturday, the 14th, from 11 a.m., or 8 to 11 a.m. is the Fall Shred and Electronics Recycling Event here on the Civic Campus. Phil also presented the city's annual energy analysis. And that was very interesting to see some very geeky numbers on how much energy the city is using in, in electricity, natural gas, gasoline, diesel, and our offsets with PV systems and the O'Brien Solar Farm, et cetera.
Can you share that information with us?
Yeah, we were waiting for, Phil wasn't quite done with the report yet, but he was going to send it out to the commissioners. And I think I can share that with the council and mayor afterwards. It may also be just simply a link that he, you know, if he posts it to the website. All of the solar inverters have been replaced and are fully operational now. The Dark Sky Ordinance Giraffe should be ready by the end of this week. And finally, Sustained Dane has a milk carton recycling program in 17 Madison schools, as well as three Sun Prairie schools. And Sun Prairie is going to bring an additional six schools to the program. So that's, apparently that started out as just a program at Elder Leopold Elementary and it's, it's grown to over 20 schools now. Yeah, that was driven by, primarily by Chris Jamison.
Oh, okay. I have a question about the event for Saturday.
Yes.
How we are promoting that event?
Well, I've heard it on Talking Fitchburg headlines.
Yeah, okay.
I presume it's been on Facebook.
Oh, really? Oh, I haven't seen, this is what I. Okay, no, I am asking because I haven't seen anything in Facebook or, so, okay. But are you still looking for volunteers or no?
I spoke with Ben Schulte earlier this evening and he said that they've, they've got enough volunteers.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Bill. Transportation and Transit Commission?
We meet next on Thursday.
Okay. Community and Economic Development Authority?
We meet again in a couple of weeks.
Okay, great. Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee?
We meet next week on the 17th at 4 p.m.
Thank you. Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission?
We met last week. The main topics discussed were the Week Without Bicycle proclamation that Alder Jettser and I are bringing forward. We also talked a little bit about the updates to the bike and pedestrian plan. And then I'll just share an announcement that the Pick Me Up at the Border event, that's 6:30 p.m. on Friday, September 20th, at Seminole Tap, 5956 Executive Drive. It's pretty much an all-night ride and it goes from Fitchburg all the way to the Illinois-Wisconsin border. So if you go to bikefitchburg.org/events.html, you should be able to register for it. That's all I have.
Thank you. EMS Commission?
Next meeting is Thursday, 7:30 in council chambers.
Thank you. Healthy Neighborhood Committee?
We are hopefully going to be meeting in October.
Okay. Housing Advisory Committee?
No report.
Landmark Preservation Commission?
We have no report.
Tree Advisory Committee?
We meet Thursday at 4 p.m. in the Janine Sealing Room.
Thank you. Community Equity Committee?
Yes, we are organizing our next meeting that will take place next week.
Thank you. And then we have report from other commission and committees. I don't know, Jim, do you have anything to report from the police facility?
Just a little bit of update. They're still working on the plan right now. What they're looking at doing is working on the site to see how much savings can be had from the site to increase a little bit more room in the, in the building itself. So they've come up with some good ideas, but that's from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. I had a meeting today with the engineer and the chief and Chad. They, they mentioned that 30% of the schematic design is already done. So they're continuing working on the schematic design. And then they think that by August or next year, we are going to proceed with the bidding process. So, and they're going to do a, they're going to do a presentation on next week on Plan Commission. I think so. Or in November. I don't know. But, okay. I think it's, okay. So next we move to Standing Committees Report. We will start with Finance Committee.
Finance Committee, we had a director's report, but the basic, I'm surprised the mayor didn't say it. The budget's almost done. It's going to be released next Friday, not this Friday, next Friday.
Yeah, if we close it.
Yeah. That's, that's the hope, that's the plan. That's the schedule, I guess. Best of luck to you all. And then I will move on to resolutions. A move approval of resolution R-15124 approving a two-year agreement with Quantum Workplace to provide employee survey software.
Second.
This was passed by, or is passed Finance. And I can explain this. So this was originally identified by the DEI Employee Research Group about, they wanted to survey employees and engage them. They started looking at companies because there was ARPA money set aside for this use. They had multiple demos and this organization was also retained in Sun Prairie. It's a two-year contract, 17,000 per year. And they, you know, they will do, as the original, you know, idea was, you know, DEI staff culture surveys, but it can do every type of survey. It can do exit questionnaires, 30, 60, 90-day check-ins, different reviews. So it's going to be really an HR tool and an employee engagement tool and employee culture tool as well. And what the nice thing about it is that they, they research and create these surveys. So the city staff doesn't have to put them together. They know that they're, they're data-driven, data-tested. And apparently there's also an ability to compare to other similar cities. I don't know that, I don't know that you get the exact, like who exactly it is, but you can see if you're on, on par with cities of a similar size in terms of employee satisfaction and kind of get a sense of where you stand. And, yeah. I think Sarah also considers it a staff retention tool. Improving those staff cultures is an important part and our city staff is the core, the staff is the core function of the city. So that's my summary.
Thank you. Any question? We need to settle the vote for this, so I will ask, you know, for God.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Dancer Jr.?
Aye.
Alder Gerhert?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jettser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Vafadari?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So next one.
A move approval of resolution R-15324 authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Hyundai Iconic All-Wheel Drive Electric Vehicle from U.S. Fleet Vehicle Source, Inc.
Second.
So this is an accessing vehicle. It is an add to our fleet, so it's not replacing a current vehicle. The cost is just over 42,000. ARPA funds were set aside to invest in some additional electric vehicles that are needed by the city. And ARPA funds were chosen specifically because there's those spend-down requirements and we have to have the money out the door, I think, by the end of 2026. So using this money now is a, is a good way to invest and get it out the door in time for those, for those benchmarks. And we also think that we can get $7,500 from the federal government as a rebate, not just a tax credit, but actually like a rebate. So that'll, that'll be investigated. The one caveat here is that we will need more infrastructure as a result of these vehicles, this one and the next two that are coming. That will probably come from ARPA funds as well, although they do have the hybrid electric vehicle fund as a backup. But that will have to come as a separate resolution, so we'll see that in the near future. And we do expect. future. And we do expect that, in addition to the next two that we'll talk about in the next resolution, we anticipate that if there is additional funding, we potentially could add another electric vehicle to the fleet.
The idea was, we go, we allocate two-hundred thousand dollar for five vehicles.
Yeah.
And the idea is to see if we can, at least, we need, we have to, we can buy another one, because we are gonna have the rebate for sure. They are called direct payment
Yeah.
from the, from the government, so, um, yes.
So, hopefully, we'll see more. And I'm excited about it.
Yeah.
I've been an annoying one for, for years, and now this is finally happening, so I'm very excited.
Any question or comment? Or Jay?
Yeah, this is one of those things where, uh, when we write the resolution, I would love it if we would put in the title what department it is for, 'cause otherwise, it just looks like we're buying a vehicle. So...
Yeah, this one is gonna be for accessing.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any other questions?
I have a random question. How do we decide what brand of electric vehicle we buy?
Okay, so Chad and Phil worked with this for a couple of months, and then what was it, they, we were looking for four-wheel?
All-wheel drive we're looking for, and it's also a state contract.
Ford Mach-E has all-wheel drive, just keep that in mind.
I'll pass it along.
Okay.
I, I heard it, I heard this was picked, 'cause Chad thought he looked the coolest when he was sitting there.
Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-dash-one-fifty-three-dash-twenty-four, say aye?
Aye.
And you...
Aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next one.
Uh, next, I will move approval of Resolution R-one-fifty-four-twenty-four, authorizing the purchase of two Ford All-Wheel Drive Electric Vehicles from Ewald Automotive Group.
Second.
So, this is two vehicles, same vehicle, um, but it's, it's slightly more heavy-duty needs, um, hence the different type of vehicle. It's for building inspection and one for the police, but this is not a squad car, it's just a fleet car for them. The total for both of those, them is around, now, like, ninety-two thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-nine, I think is the exact number. And everything else that I mentioned is pretty much the same as the previous vehicle. Same plans.
Any comment? Uh, Dave?
Um, I assume we're, I assume we're selling the, uh, the old vehicles that these are replacing.
Yes, we would sell those. We've looked at those, actually handing them down, so we do an analysis to figure out, is it worth holding on, and it comes into how much maintenance and how much money we're spending on the maintenance.
All right, thank you, Adam.
Any other comment, question? No? All those in favor of Resolution R-dash-one-fifty-four-dash-twenty-four, say aye?
Aye.
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 And you oppose, the motion carries. Thank you. Next, we move to Personal Committee. Any update?
Um, no update, other than we're just still, um, in the process of negotiations with the, uh, finalizing police and fire union contract.
Thank you. Uh, Public Safety and Human Services?
Uh, I don't have anything to report.
Thank you. Then we move to item ten, unfinished business. Um, we have an ordinance. So, is Valerie here? Yes, so, uh, who can read this?
I can do it.
Okay.
I'll move approval of Ordinance twenty-twenty-four-oh-twenty-four, creating Section Eight, One-O-two-E of Pittsburgh Ordinances related to the, to informed consent to permit the city attorney to communicate information related to its representation of city in order to consult with other attorneys for purposes of collaboration and effective legal representation.
Second.
Okay, so, uh, our attorney, City Attorney is here, so she's gonna, uh, explain what is this. Valerie?
Uh, yes, thank you very much, uh, Madam Mayor and Alders. Uh, this, uh, before you is an, uh, ordinance amendment which updates the city attorney ordinance to create a subsection E. This, um, uh, you can see the language before you, but the, the short of it is that, uh, the American Bar Association recently issued an opinion which, uh, brought into question the use of, uh, listservs and other, uh, professional groups for attorneys to discuss potential, uh, legal questions, um, by disclosing, uh, information relating to the representation of a client, uh, and specifically as it relates to the identity of the client at all. So, in other words, in a lot of fields of practice, the fact that an attorney might be representing a client is confidential information, uh, that would not, um, be, uh, released without informed consent of a, the client. Uh, but, uh, in the case of a city attorney, uh, that's a statutory officer, it is, of course, public knowledge that the city of Pittsburgh, City of Pittsburgh City Attorney represents the city of Pittsburgh. And so, uh, since this opinion was issued by the ABA that called into the question kind of this ongoing use of listservs and other, um, types of professional networking where attorneys can engage in communications with other attorneys who also have expertise in municipal law, uh, the, uh, municipal attorneys around the state have been discussing how to address this concern. And so, the, before you is an ordinance amendment, uh, a number of municipalities have taken this route, uh, in effect, by adopting this, uh, ordinance, if you do so, you will be granting, uh, informed consent for me to engage in the use of these types of forums, um, to communicate with other attorneys who have expertise in municipal law. Some examples of that might be conferences, uh, for instance, ones that are put on by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, um, Municipal Attorney Institute, or the listserv that the League of Municipalities hosts for municipal attorneys, or there's a weekly call around, um, with attorneys from around the state where attorneys can discuss things. So, for an example, that might look like, uh, asking the question, "Hey, has anyone adopted an ordinance that regulates, oh, let's say, e-cigarettes, and how do you address that issue?" Or, "What, what, what are you guys doing about liquor licenses, and have you heard about this update in the law?" Or, "Has anyone encountered this particular issue, and how have you dealt with it?" Uh, these types of questions. So, it's been longstanding practice for, um, my office to, uh, engage in communications with other attorneys who have expertise with other, uh, who have expertise in municipal law. I, I mean, collaboration really is, I think, integral and vital to the practice of law. Law is not practiced in a vacuum. Um, and so, I would ask, uh, the Council to consider this ordinance amendment to allow, um, me to continue to use that as a resource. Um, as I mentioned, other municipalities have adopted similar ordinances, specifically, I believe the city of Madison adopted a similar ordinance earlier this summer. So, I'm happy to discuss. Um, I guess I should add, of course, uh, any disclosure that I would make would have to not be adverse to the city's interests. So, of course, I would have to continue to keep the city's interest in mind, um, and, uh, not disclose information that would be detrimental.
Thank you, Valerie. Uh, any question? Uh, Nicole?
Uh, I just, it's not a question, I shouldn't have raised my hand. I just have a comment that I, I, I appreciate the ability to network with other representatives and therefore extend the amount of legal experience that Pittsburgh has access to through it. So, thank you.
Uh, any other questions, comment? No? Okay. All those in favor of Ordinance twenty-twenty-four-dash-oh-dash-twenty-four, say aye?
Aye.
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 And you oppose, the motion carries. Uh, next, we move to eleven, new business. This is a direct referral.
I can do it.
Okay.
I'll move approval of Resolution R-one-fifty-eight-twenty-four, Resolution Approving of Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association Ticket Program Payment.
Second.
Finance approved. And so, this is, uh, Scott gave us a nice summary on the, the referral sheet says it, but basically, the Recreation Department sells discounted tickets. Um, I can't remember who, yeah, it's the Wisconsin Park and Recreation Program, and it's a significant discount, it's like thirty bucks off of these tickets, Noah's Ark and Mokey Zoo. They sold thirteen hundred tickets over the course of the summer. Um, we also get seventy-five cents per ticket, um, which was almost a thousand dollar net profit, but we're not really doing it for the money, we're doing it as a service to our residents and having them engage with the Recreation Department, um, which is great. And this is authorizing the payment, because we collected all that money, and now we have to pay out the...
Yes.
...the amount of money that was, that was never ours to begin with, but that we collected.
Any question, comment? All those in favor of Resolution R-dash-one-fifty-eight-dash-twenty-four, say aye?
Aye.
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 And you oppose, the motion carries. So, next, we move to, uh, item twelve, is Alder District Report. So, today we are planning to start with District One.
Um, I wanted to thank the Police Department, they caught the, uh, the vandals that were, uh, destroying our, our nice, um...
Basketball, yeah.
Basketball court on, uh, Western Hills Court on, on Whitney Way. They, they, they caught them, they admitted it. I, I suggested that we put them in stocks and throw rotten fruit at them, but, uh, I guess that's not gonna happen. But, thank, thank, thank them and the neighbors for, for catching them. I also wanted to, um, thank the Fire Department today for their, uh, professional services. The building I work in, the fire alarm went off, and, uh, we had to evacuate the building. Everyone was standing outside, and they said, "Is the Fire Department coming?" And I, I pointed, I said, "Well, they'll be here in a minute," 'cause they're a block away. But, they, they came, they came, they got in quickly, and they found it was a, uh, a motor that, that pressurized, keeps the sprinkler system pressurized, and it had, the motor had burnt, burnt up, and it was emitting. Um, and so, they, they found it right away, they, they got it shut off, uh, they gave us the number to call Manona Plumbing to get it rectified, and opened doors and got us back in the office relatively quickly. So, appreciate that, uh, professional response from our Fire Department. That's all I had.
Thank you. Uh, Joe?
Uh, I'm reemphasizing the Teen Center Public Workshop on, um, uh, the twelfth, and also on the thirteenth at five-thirty, there is an Allied, uh, Dunn's Marsh Community Meal, um, at the Allied Park. But if, uh, there's rain or cold, it'll be at, uh, the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you. Uh, District Two?
Yes, I attended the Wildflowers of Wisconsin artwork unveiling as well. Um, in addition, then, uh, I went over to the COPA Festival...
Oh, yeah.
...over on Index Road, and I listened to several bands. That was entertaining. I noticed there's visible progress on the North Fish Hatchery Road Hub. It's under construction.
Oh, really?
It's actually happening. There is earth being moved.
I've been...
Uh, Council may recall that our street maintenance, um, program was, uh, we, we passed an amendment to, to do some additional paths and, and, uh, basketball courts, and one of those is, is, uh, the, the little stub between Mickelson Parkway and the Fish Hatchery Road Path.
Which one?
Uh, right over, um, it's like behind Summit Credit Union there. It leads up to the path along Fish Hatchery Road. So, that's, that's actually the, uh, been ground up and removed, and the new asphalt will be laid shortly.
Oh, yeah, I know where it is. I didn't know that it was in bad condition.
Reminder, uh, Joe mentioned it earlier, but Friday, September twentieth, is the Bike Pittsburgh Pick Me Up at the Border Ride, meet at the Seminole Tap at six-thirty. Um, and you don't have to ride all the way to the Illinois border. You can turn around at any point.
My spirit is gonna be with you.
If you, if you like, you can bring your kids and just pedal, you can just pedal down the road for a mile or two and turn around and go back.
Yeah, very entertaining, with a kid.
A couple days later, Bus Rapid, uh, Transit Route A comes online, Sunday, September twenty-second. In case you're in Madison, you might wanna jump on the BRT bus and, and, see what that's like.
It's gonna be the most, I think they're gonna, what is this, this, on Thursday, there is the most, I don't know, they invite the city to go to, to test.
Yeah, they've, they've had a couple of test runs.
Yeah, there is one this coming Thursday, and then the ribbon cutting is September twenty-four.
Okay. On, uh, uh, September twenty-eighth, that's a Saturday, from eleven AM to one PM, at Memorial UCC, uh, fifty-seven oh-five Lacy Road, there's a Bike Festival, Pedal Palooza. There'll be a Bike Pittsburgh Bike Rodeo with a bike safety check. Um, we'll have the, uh, the bike that you can pedal to run the blender and make yourself a smoothie. Um, we'll have a little e-bike show and tell, and some wonders of physics demos will be happening there as well. So, it's fun for the whole family. Feel free to show up to that. And finally, as the equinox approaches and darker skies move in, I would just like to wish a happy, of course, it's bedtime, look how dark it is outside, to all those who celebrate.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll just reiterate the recycling event, 'cause I'm excited about it. The Saturday, September fourteenth, eight AM to eleven AM at Pittsburgh City Hall, there's gonna be electronics and paper shredding. There are a fee for some electronics, the big stuff like TVs, so please check if you have to pay before you bring something. Um, and then there is no med drop. We don't do med drop anymore at the Police Department, so don't bring your medicine, we cannot take it. And, uh, and yeah, another plug, please go, go see the, the Mickey Farmers Park artwork. It is so beautiful, and I'm very sad to hear that it's not staying forever.
Only for a year.
I thought it was, I should, I, anyway, I wish it would stay forever. It's gorgeous. Go take a look, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, District Three?
My light keeps changing. Uh, there's not a, not a lot going on in District Three right now, but we did, uh, get Highway MM opened again, uh, from the sewer replacement that had to be done. Uh, there is some other construction happening, so, but the road's gonna remain open, so, just people just be careful as you drive through the area.
Thank you. Uh, Donald, do you have anything? No?
Nope, um, just echoing Jay, that has been pretty quiet in District Three. Um, and if you can, not necessarily in the district, but, um, attend, uh, the Senior Center Event on September nineteenth, that evening, I think it'll be a good time just to connect with the individuals over there. Other than that, nothing further.
Thank you. And District Four?
Yes, I...
Nothing to report.
Yeah, okay. I always jump and run to gym. Um, so, from my end, um, just, uh, a few quick things, as Madam Mayor commented, I'm very grateful to the city, um, especially the building inspectors and the staff that we had available at the, um, Mobile Home Park...
Oh, yeah.
...meeting. They were just phenomenal. Also, kudos to the mayor for real-time being our translator. It was fantastic. I was very impressed. Um, a reminder that the Greenfield Neighborhood Meeting has a meeting September nineteenth here at five-thirty PM. Um, and then, um, for all elected officials and really anybody in the community, the Madison Reading Project is having a brunch on Tuesday, September seventeenth, at seven-thirty AM. Um, if you are not familiar with it, it's pretty fantastic. It's like a bunch of books in a bus that they drive around all of Dane County. They also work with school districts, including all three that our students benefit from. Um, and so, they just want people to come by from the community to see the great work that they're doing. And that's it from District Four.
Thank you. Um, okay, that's it. So, uh, thank you, guys. And then, announcement, uh, our next common council meeting will be September twenty-four. Um, then, um, the next Committee of the Whole will be September twenty-five. So, also, I want to say, um, that, um, uh, starting September fifteen, the, the United States celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month. From September fifteen to, uh, October fifteen, um, I will be, uh, I will bring the proclamation to our next meeting. So, I want to say, um, to thank to our Latino community here in Pittsburgh, we are more than four thousand Latinos living in Pittsburgh, and I want to say thank you for your contribution to this community. Um, we are gonna celebrate September twenty-four. Um, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Thank you. We are adjourning at eight-fifty-eight. Thank you. Buenas noches, gracias.